Alrighty. Today is Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is now seven thirty-one P M. And this is a regular city commission meeting of the City of West Miami. Call this meeting to order for the pleasure of allegiance.
For invocation, the chief will, uh...
In invocation, I'm sorry, the agenda was covered. Oh, no.
invocation please. Good evening, Lord. Uh, let's borrow heads. Heavenly Father, bless this meeting today. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here today and for each mind and heart that fills, fills your presence in this room. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish tonight through our labor of love and greater good of our city. We pray for those who are in need of compassion, love, family, and friends and basic needs. We pray for our elected leaders, our city employees and their families. We pray for our law enforcement officers, first responders, so they return home safely from their daily shifts. Lord, hear our prayers and always keep us safe from harm. Amen.
Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Juan, can you check, oh, one moment, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I don't, I don't hear the...
We had audio.
Yeah, it's off. No.
No.
The mics are on, but...
Yeah, no.
But the, uh...
Hello, hello? No.
Is that clear?
Testing. All right, we're back on. You just scared someone. All right.
Scared me.
So, um...
Yes.
We'll wait for the commissioner to get back and then, uh... Or you just do the roll call now. He can do it from there.
Yes, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanis.
Present.
Commissioner Candy de Blanca is excused this evening. Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum. City Manager Yolanda Aguilar is excused this evening for a very happy reason. She has a grandson, a new grandson. So congratulations to the whole family.
Yeah, we congratulate the manager for her new grandson. I don't know, she's probably watching because she's obsessed. But, uh, she's, uh... But we congratulate her, uh... I believe his name is Mario, like his father. And he, I saw a picture, he's, you know, perfect and beautiful, so very happy for the manager.
Five grandkids.
Yep, too many.
Yes.
Uh... The next item, please.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, and min- minutes for March second, two thousand and twenty-three, special commission meeting.
Motion. Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, public comments. None this evening, Mr. Mayor. Yes, item six, report of the city manager. So the manager is not present, uh, so none, no report. Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There was a red alert area that emanated from a red light camera. And, uh, that, uh, issue was resolved by amicable, uh, resolution of the, uh, issues. And, uh, we executed a, uh, contract, uh, an agreement. And, uh, the, uh, gentleman, the petitioner withdrew the, uh, filed a, uh, motion to withdraw the application for red alert area.
Perfect. Thank you. Next item.
Item eight, report of city engineer.
He's always fun. How are you? Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Uh, so the only, really, I mean, we have one item on the agenda that we'll talk about, uh, right after this. Uh, but the only item, uh, that I need to report on is on the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit reduction that was approved by the county. Uh, so we received that approval. Uh, I'm trying to get a letter from them because we do have to execute a, uh, an interlocal agreement with the county to, uh, to move forward with the project. Uh, so that's the next step and we'll work on, uh, getting that drafted and sorted out with the county and move forward. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. I, I know, uh, I've been working on it for a while. I know Commissioner Blanis is working on it much longer. Uh, so, yeah, so, uh, Vice Mayor Blanis has been working on it for a lot longer. So I'm, that's, that's very, very, very good news. Thank you. Um, one thing I did, I know you have an item on the agenda, but one thing, and I was gonna, I had two notes. One was for an update on twenty-five mile an hour, which you've already given. The other one, is there any update on the entrance signs? Um, I don't know if, want we, where are we at on that process?
I know we've seen everything from the contractor. Um, I just not sure what the status is.
At this point, the contractor, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. At this point, the contractor is scheduling the electrical work that has to be done to the sites with the electrical contractor that they have for the work. So within the next couple of months, it should be all done.
Okay, so the timeline right now is...
Two months.
Two, two months, okay. All right, thank you. Um, all right. Next item, thank you. Uh, did you have something now or did you want to go to the other?
No, that's all I have at this time.
Okay, we'll, we'll get back to you on the item.
Item nine, committee reports.
Anybody for committee reports? Seeing, seeing nothing, okay. Um, n- next item.
Item ten, under our finished business. Item ten A, report by the chief of police regarding sixty-third Avenue and Sixteenth Street in intersection. And update by the city engineer regarding a limited traffic study to be conducted by Miami, by Miami-Dade County Chief of Police, City Engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. At the last meeting, it was requested, uh, by you all that the city manager go ahead and, uh, have me do a, uh, a, a study as to how many accidents have occurred, uh, at sixty-third Avenue and Sixteenth Street. Uh, she asked me to do five years, although it should be four, but she wanted five. Uh, because that one's, the last one, uh, two thousand and eighteen was already counted in the last count that was done, uh, for the traffic study. But either way, since two thousand and eighteen, we've had six crashes at sixty-third Avenue and, uh, uh, Sixteenth Street. Uh, all were angle accidents, uh, 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 failure to yield at the stop sign or failure to stop at the stop sign. Um, so there's actually been five. If you count, if you don't count two thousand and eighteen, so.
Yeah, and, and the resident, the resident actually texted me on Friday saying there was another one. I don't know if that's confirmed or not, but there was another one in front of his house, so that would be six.
It could be. I, I, I'm not aware.
I know, it's not in your report date because obviously this cuts off.
Right. Uh, but if that were the case, there was two this year, so this would be a third one if in fact, uh, there was another one. I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out and let you know. Either way, there's been more than normal, eh, this year. Uh, we're in March, so if there's been three, there's been one a month.
Right.
So, uh, from two, two thousand and eighteen to present, from sixty-second Avenue to sixty-seventh Avenue on Sixteenth Street, we have written one thousand, one hundred and ten traffic tickets to either people running stop signs, speeding, uh, what have you. Uh, crashes in the entire city since two thousand and eighteen have been one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one. Just an average of about, about two-twenty, uh, a year, more or less, give or take. And that's all I have as far as that report is concerned.
Uh, so we went ahead and forwarded that data to the county. Um, although it doesn't sound like a big number, in the context, um, when you look at just like the, the streets within the city, uh, it, it is pretty much the, the one intersection of our city that has the, the highest incidents. Uh, that was, you know, that was what we found in the previous study. Um, I, I think, you know, I think one, in the previous study, we had about, I think, thirteen crashes at that intersection or over the, the, the study period. So we've seen a drop which could be attributed to, to COVID. There was a few years that people weren't driving a whole lot, so, uh, you know, we could attribute it to that. But, um, but nevertheless, that intersection is still obviously a hotspot. Uh, we forwarded that information to the county and requested them to, uh, initiate a, a study, uh, which is the process. And they did respond saying they were going to do that. Uh, I do not have a timeline yet as to when that's gonna be executed. Uh, but I do have, uh, I do have an email from the county saying that they, you know, they'll, they'll put it in the, in the queue. Uh, and they will study that intersection for, for possible improvements. Yeah, because that, that's not a street that's gonna be covered by a twenty-five mile an hour. No. So there, there'll have to be, uh, you know, county will have to work with us on some sort of calming device. I mean, we'll, you know, see what, see what they can come up with. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, it's gonna be difficult for that street, although if you look, you know, in, in the neighborhood to the, to the west, that there is some traffic calming along Sixteenth. What, what are they, what are they using? Um, kind of, yeah, like a hybrid circle type thing, yeah. Kind of like the sausage one that we have out here, like narrow circle. Okay, all right, so it's, it's not a circle, it's sort of like a, right, okay, that's, it's in the concept. Yeah, around the, around the track.
Yeah, the, the, the street that it's on, on Sixteenth Street is the, 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 the intersection itself is off, offset. So since it's offset.
It's zigzag. Yeah, all right, yeah, that, that, that's, that's, that's what I had in mind because, you know, there's, there's a lot of residents that talk about the speed favors, which is something that I'm in favor of, you know, to look at generally, well, as we go with the traffic calming throughout residential streets. But that street might not be a candidate because of its, um, you know, volume of traffic. Um, so, you know, the zig is probably, that zigzag, I don't know what you professionally call it, but that zigzag is probably the, you know... But that's, again, that's, that's unfortunately up to the county. Yeah, I mean, let's see what they come back with. I, I, you know, I, I really don't see why the road can't be calmed because it doesn't, it really doesn't, you know, doesn't continue past the Palmetto nor, nor, nor east, east through Corregibles, so. Right. So, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead. We have, uh, Chavez and then Suarez. Go ahead.
So I think the resident mentioned that there was something on that corner, either vehicles, parking, it was creating a blind spot. Is that correct?
I don't know, that I'm not aware of. Oh, I, I think that was addressed to the police department. Uh, Chief, do you remember that comment?
Uh, the reason I'm asking, I'm just curious.
We're gonna record you in today.
Why specifically that intersection is having a higher volume of incidents?
So the swales on Sixteenth Street are quite larger than the rest of the swales in, in the rest of the city. The, the, the amount of space you can actually park a vehicle head in. And, and it's on the swale. There's really nothing that we can do about that. The swales are so large.
Well, but why specifically Sixteenth and sixty-third is my question? Because the swales go all the way down.
We have to check with the fathers of this city when they did, when they made this city, that street, there's, there's space there to make a two-lane highway all the way, actually.
So that's, that section specifically has a larger than usual swell?
Yes.
Okay.
And a lot of the homeowners, instead of angle parking, they just park straight in. They don't get up on the sidewalk and they're not on the street either.
Can, can we do something about that? To, to away with that blind spot?
Well, that's on, that's on us. Um, yeah, that's, that's what the chief, I think, was gonna allude to there. Uh, yeah, it can only, it can only, uh, you know, it only enforce as far as we.
The law allows us.
Right.
Right.
Um, I think, I think we have to look at that. Um, I, I don't know if that's something you want, you, you wanna take, take initiative on and look at.
The reason I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, is because I drove, after that meeting, I drove by there and I was trying to understand what they were describing. And I noticed that there was blind spots there. So that was my first instinct was to maybe try and do something with that blind spot.
Yeah.
Before traffic calming because it is a weird, it's right after that main intersection that we have on Sixteenth and Sixty-second and then to have...
You have another avenue that's exactly like that one and you don't have as many accidents as you do there, which would be sixty-fifth Avenue.
Right.
And again, it's the same thing. The swales are so large that vehicles park and it, if that's what's causing the blind spot, if you will.
You know.
They're parked legally.
Yeah, we, we have to, we have to see, uh, you know, I, I, I encourage you to take the, the initiative on that. I, I'd be happy to connect you with any residents and the resident that came in, I speak to frequently. Um, there's, uh, you know, whatever we do, we have to do limited because you don't want to take away what is legal parking, um, you know, from, from residents. Uh, very limited scope to prevent blind spots, so we have to see how we kind of craft that. Um, but, you know, I, I encourage you to bring back to the discussion, do a little, little research, bring back to the discussion and, and let's see what we can legally, what we can legally do too. Because, you know, we have to follow our own, we have our own laws we gotta follow. But, um, see what we can do from, from our side on the code side. Um, but I'm gonna task that to you, uh, to kind of, uh, bring forward.
I'll do some research and by next meeting, hopefully have something.
Beautiful. Thank you, Chief. Suarez. Oh, wait, you, you come back, come back.
I have a question. Why is the reason this study or investigation about the sixty-third Avenue and Sixteen? Because sixty-four is, almost have the same traffic at the sixty-third?
The same traffic, but they have a four-way stop. There's a four-way stop on sixty-fourth Avenue.
And what about sixty-three?
There is no four-way stop. The stop signs are at north and south.
Well, what about sixty-one, sixty-first Street? There is no, no sixty-first.
No.
What about the sixty-fifth and sixty-fifth?
There's stop signs, north and south.
North and south? So sixteen and sixty-five?
Sixteen is open.
Correct.
So in sixty-four is a stop for, for sixteen?
There's a four-way stop sign.
Sixty-third is not a stop for sixty-three?
No four-way stop sign.
Okay, now, we are discussing this and then, and according with the study, the sixty-third is the most dangerous of the world, more accident occur, right?
Statistically, yes.
Well, if that happened, why we don't ask for a four-way stop for the sixty-third like a sixty-four?
That would have to...
Because...
That's what we've, so we've asked.
If the problem is that and you consider, the consideration is that the stop sign prevents, you ask for a stop sign?
Well.
Because the sixteen, excuse me, is for sixty-seven to the sixty-four, because then the school comes, you know? So it's about five blocks. So we put, if we, connect, we put the, the four-stop sign in those two making equal the risk. Why don't do that? It's in your hands, go ahead. In my opinion, do it.
It is a county road, so it's, it's not under our jurisdiction, so we've asked the county to study it.
So we have to go to D O T?
No, to the Miami-Dade County.
County? So, they speak English, right?
They will, they will study it and that may be one of the solutions. But we'll have to wait and see what they come back.
If you have a problem, I recommend you that because they close by us, they speak English like us.
Well, we'll, we'll make sure to advocate to the county on, on, on the four-way.
You admit the right, Mayor, I, my recommendation, do it and that's it. We finish this problem.
We'll make sure to, uh, to advocate to the county on that, in whatever language they speak. Um, next, uh, anyone else on this item? Nope, next item.
Uh, yes, uh, item eleven, under new business agenda items. Item eleven A, this is a first reading of an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, amending chapter nine, article seven of the Code of Ordinances, transient vacation rentals, including additional definitions, expanding life safety requirements, requiring smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, hardwired to main electrical system in every room of the vacation dwelling, requiring ground fault circuit interruptors, requiring licensed electrical contractors to conduct any electrical installation, increasing license cost to two thousand, five hundred dollars per year, providing for sanctions, repealing all ordinances of char, of chapter nine, section seven in conflict, providing for survivability, providing for renumbering, providing for codification, pro, providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Blanis.
This is a first reading?
Yes.
Can I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Uh, call the roll.
Uh, the second was made by Commissioner Chavez.
Commissioner Su...
Uh, Vice Mayor Blanis, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes. And the second reading, uh, in public hearing of this ordinance will take place on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven-thirty P M.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
Next item, item B, beatabulation report for the urban forestry grant project by city clerk and recommendation to award by the office of the city manager. In this case, uh, Mr. Pena is, uh, is gonna...
Can, can you read the resolution while you're at it?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I can read the resolution. Item C, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami approving the recommendation of the city manager and staff to award Arbor Pro Inc., the lowest responsive responsible bidder in the request for proposals, Urban Forestry Management Plan Number two thousand and twenty-three, zero-two-two-seven, two thousand and twenty-three, to be funded fifty percent by Urban Forestry Grant and fifty percent from reserve designated fund fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, instructing the city manager to execute any and all documents required to accomplish the interest of this resolution, providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the, we put out a request for proposals to, uh, for the tree, uh, study, to look at our, all of our trees and see, rate them between the condition they're, they're in, the location they're in.
On you.
And how, how proper they are for the placement that they're in. Uh, this is, uh, part of the, uh, my, uh, grant that we had got from Forest Urban Management. And the, we got four responses. The, the lowest, uh, response was actually, uh, Plant, Planet Geo, but they did not submit all the paperwork that was required. Therefore, uh, our recommendations go with Arbor Pro at thirty-two thousand, five hundred.
And that thirty-two, five hundred is, is the total amount, the?
Yes.
Total amount to be matched?
Yes.
And the match is already designated in prior reserves?
The matches are designated out of the...
Um, I, I read the proposal, I mean, the company is, the company is, I mean, they, they, they know they're doing their, they're very experienced. Um, just a question, I, I know they're, they're creating the G I S.
Correct.
For, for the tree inventory. Um, are they also, are they also gonna designate, um, trees that are at risk or at, or badly located that can create infrastructure challenges?
Yes.
They're gonna be doing that, they're gonna be highlighting for us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions on this? I know this has been brought up a few times.
No, I have a question for this.
Go ahead.
It's very simple. About the, the grant. Depends the number of, of plants that we are going to, the forestry, whatever we are going to plant, right?
No, no, this is not for planting trees. This is to look at all the trees we have planted and tell us what condition and lo, uh, whether they're in a good location, whether the trees in, on danger of falling over, things like that that they look at, uh, depending on where they're planted.
So, so, second question. We are happy with the trees we have, right?
Yes.
And, uh, why we need to make an, told you that we cost the money to, to know about the trees? Because everybody's happy, nobody complaining about the trees.
No, there's several people that are, are wary of trees that they have in front, in their right of way in front of their property.
Well, I'll tell you, we actually have, um, a lot of, I mean, I know from, from, from knocking, from knocking doors this last election, trees was one of the bigger issues. Uh, we have a lot of canopy, which is beautiful, but a lot of the trees, uh, are these non-native species like black olives that cause a lot of issues. Uh, a lot of issues with the roots especially, um, as you know, we've dealt with here before. Um, and, you know, a lot of infrastructure damage that can happen, especially with the roots. And especially because we, when we planted them, there wasn't a lot of, uh, knowledge out there as there is now today on, on these trees. So they're, they're planted, are they, I mean, we, we're probably at risk at some of the sewer lines intrusion, um, property damage that can be avoided. So it's, it's gonna tell us where all the trees are and, and, you know, and actually map everything what we have. But it's also gonna tell us where we could avoid property damage, um, and where we can avoid infrastructure damage. Um, that'll hopeless, hopefully save us a lot more than the, what are fifteen thousand dollars that we're paying on the match.
Correct.
Um, you know, in the long run, because there, we, we do have, we do have a rather big tree issue.
And it provides us, it provides us a, a path of moving forward with future plantings.
Let me, the, the third question. This, uh, study is going to know the problems that we have with some trees for the future planting?
Yes.
That's the idea?
Well, it, no, or, or even for, for, to remediate problems?
Remove the plant now?
In, in some, in some cases, yes.
Let me tell you, Mayor. Uh, according what I, what I know and I read about the history of black olive, when the, this city, especially Corregible, was founded, the people who came from the north, they were surprised. There was a tree that in January was green. The winter was green. It was a miracle, the tree was green and the tree was the black olive. So that's why in Corregible especially, they plant black olive all over. Because in, in the winter was a, a green tree. They have no idea the problem that the roots have. Then after sixty, seventy years now, we found that those trees have problems. That's why in the county, there is an, some kind of, it's not ordinance, but there is some kind of, um, movement, not movement, but we may say that in the planting, they recommend do not plant the black olive no more.
Right.
Now, if we are going to start to, to remove black olives, go to Corregible, see if we can do it. I'm pretty sure they will not, because there are hundreds, you know, thousands of black olives.
No, most of Corregible's trees aren't black olives, but...
And, and my point is, we have here, as long I, I've been living in this city, I never heard people complaining. Maybe it's some neighbors complaining about the dogs, the neighbor, another neighbor. Always there is some complaint about something. But my, my idea is, my question, if we are going to get money, it's for planting new trees, not for, to remove and...
No, I, I, I can tell you, Commissioner, I, I, I disagree. I, I, I knocked every door in the city and it was a big, big, big issue. It was a massive issue. People like trees, I mean, let me, let me be very clear.
That's why, people like trees, people are happy.
But they have problems in certain locations with the trees we planted. Um, and we've had issues on this board, we've had to, we've had to remediate and pay a lot of money to remediate because of, of where our trees are that have had to be removed.
Now, now, in this, in this case, if we get the money for this, we, we remove a, a tree, they are going to plant another tree substituting? I mean...
There will be a recommendation of what to put in what place.
And then if we take a one tree, we would put back another tree?
That, that will be determined at that point.
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm pro-tree, so I, I, I want there to be as many trees in the city as possible. Um, so I'm not, I'm not for going around and removing all the trees. It's just very select places where we can avoid a lot of damage.
Well, but if we remove a tree, we should plant another tree in that place, another, another friendly, friendly tree.
Um, maybe not in the exact place, but right near it, yes, absolutely.
Because we should give the, the trees in the city.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, 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 I think you're right. I think you're right. Any tree that's to replace, that's taken out, we should replace with another tree, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, if I may.
Uh, maybe, uh, perhaps we should just wait till the study is done. It sounds like the study is gonna, uh, cover all these questions that are arising.
Right.
From us now. And that way we'll know exactly what's the best course of action.
Correct.
Uh, in, in, in removing, in planting, or maybe there is something that can be done to mitigate the, the issues with the roots. So I think this is a step in the right direction. The more information we have, the better, the better we can decide.
Right, and, and, and I'm hoping it's a very minimal. Uh, I'm hoping that it's, that it's just, you know, just, just a couple better problems.
My point is that if we remove a, a, a tree that give problems, we should plant a friendly tree in the same place.
I agree.
So keep the city with trees.
I agree with you.
All right.
I agree.
Do, uh, have any more questions on this? Comments, concerns, motions?
Make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item D, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami, instructing the office of the city manager to negotiate a better location for the rolls of cable installed by A T and T or Comcast Cable that has resulted, uh, in unsightly upgrade in the City of West Miami where quality of life is a priority to the mayor and city commission and the residents of the City of West Miami, providing for an effective date. This item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Blanis.
Uh, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, basically, I don't know if, uh, if you all noticed, but, um, in the, um, you know, below, below the, the, the primary and secondary lines which are electrified, you have the utilities of, uh, A T and T, Comcast, and, you know, all the communication utilities and they're, they're typically thicker lines and, and they're dark. And, uh, throughout the city, uh, we have in many different areas that I, I think, it's not really an installation and it's not really meant to be left that way. Uh, but what, what I think that happens is that when they have excess cable, excess cable, they, they don't, they don't, uh, cut it, crimp it and, 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 and that's the end of it. What they do is they they roll it up in rolls and then they leave it. Uh, I guess with tie wraps, heavy-duty tie wraps attached to the to the utility lines. So when you look up, you will see a big, huge roll of 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 uh of line. Uh, it could be fiber optic, it could be copper, I'm not sure what it is, but it does not look good. And you know, this is something that, you know, I brought up uh a while ago and, you know, um. Um, didn't mount too much, but I think, I think that uh, you know, passing this resolution will help us. Um, negotiate with uh AT&T, you know, to uh to eliminate these rules of of uh of of line. And you know, this is something that can be done quickly and effectively by them, it's not gonna be very expensive, you know, it's not like a big undertaking. And you know, our city will benefit and will look uh a lot nicer.
I agree. Um, my uh my quick, which which uh which heading did you read? There's there's a, there's a resolution in the packet that has a different heading than the resolution in the on the agenda.
I read item D, which is.
But you read it from the, from the, from the agenda?
Okay.
There's, there's a couple of things I just wanna, I I I just don't want this resolution going out and then having some of this stuff on it. So like on the third whereas, there's like a couple of question marks. It's a shameless regard by AT&T and meaning of corporate good neighbors and have created question mark, question mark, question mark, question mark.
I, I believe the, I believe the proclamation was uh tweaked a little bit. Because it was worded a little bit uh too strong, so so the city manager and I thought that uh it 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 could be toned down.
No, I have no problem with that, I just, I just, I just don't wanna have, I just want this going out, the final version with these question marks and.
Oh, okay. And 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 consequently, it 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 will really help because it it the these roles of line might not be AT&T. And you know, some might be AT&T and some might be Comcast or another utility. So that way, there will, it will be identified and then we'll know exactly who to reach, so they can remove.
Can 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 we, can we get a, can we get a, that whereas cleaned up?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, yes, the third whereas, yes, uh to remove the question marks of the whole whereas to be removed.
Um. I mean, Vice Mayor, how do you want, how do you want to read?
Uh.
Show him the resolution, on the third whereas.
Okay, yeah, uh, okay. Well, you know, we're.
You want me to read it, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, you know what, I think the word shameless should be omitted.
Whereas disregard by AT&T of the meaning corporate good neighbors. Has created blemishes by uh abandoning rules of dangling wires and unfinished infrastructure in the utilities.
Yeah.
So let's remove the word shameless.
Yeah.
Let's remove the word uh. And let's put has created, and then remove the question marks and the word and, so it shall read.
Has.
Shameless, uh sorry, disregard by AT&T or the meaning of corporate good neighbors. Has created blemishes by abandoning rules, et cetera, et cetera. And let's also adopt the heading of this resolution, if you can read it, uh, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, you will replace, it it changed uh in the course of a few days.
Yep.
That's why, uh, I mean, that's why it was submitted to me in different headings, so would you like me to read it again?
Just read it, because to we can motion as amended, yeah.
Okay, uh, let me read it again, resolution of Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami instructing the Office of the City Manager. To negotiate a better location for the rolls of cable installed by AT&T or Comcast Cable. That has resulted in a slightly upgrade in the City of West Miami where quality of life is a priority to the Mayor and City Commission. And the residents of the City of West Miami providing for an effective date, sponsored by Vice Mayor Planes.
Okay, can I get a motion as amended?
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second, call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Planes?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item E, report by the Office of the Chief of Police in reference to Miami De County Public Schools reunification plan.
Good evening once again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. On March sixth, twenty twenty-three, uh, the manager, myself, uh, my Deputy Chief, Pete Delgado and Lieutenant Valencia. Met through a Zoom uh meeting uh with officials from the school board. Uh, this is in reference to the Marjorie, Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act of two thousand eighteen. School districts are required to coordinate with municipalities, their police chief. Uh, this statutorily uh require re-unification plan for the area schools in the event of an emergency. They use a method called the standard reunification method, SRM, and this is basically part of FEMA's Incident Command System. So basically, what they are required to do by law is to go ahead and meet with us. Each district board must adopt, in coordination with local law enforcement agencies and local governments, a family reunification plan to reunite students and employees with their families in the event of. In the event that a school is closed unexpectedly evacuated due to a natural or man-made disaster. For example, a shooting. Uh, these uh reunification plans must be reviewed annually and uh and updated as needed. Individual school plans must be consistent with district policies. At a minimum, a district reunification plan must address identification of a potential reunification site. In this case, we were able to offer the rec center. As a reunification site, which would probably be the only one that would be able to hold as many students as there are in Sylvania. If there were, if we were to have some kind of problem there. Uh, obviously, they they also talk about training of employees, multiple methods of effectively communicating with the family members and students and staff. And other methods to aid law enforcement and students and staff for identification. Uh, basically, there was some conversations, uh, obviously, we we offered direct center. As 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 a possible site in case needed, they were explicitly. They explicitly told us that they would prefer to do any kind of reunification at the school, if possible. Instead of having to transport, uh, if they do, they requested to see if we can assist them in transporting them to the. The re, the other, the secondary re- uh reunification site. So we advised them that we were very limited in transportation, they advised that they would coordinate with us or us with them in reference to, you know, they. Well, they need to be bringing school buses or metro buses or whatever the case may be to go ahead and transport the children. And the uh the staff at the school, if something were to occur. Uh, we do have an MOU with the school board, an active MO- MOU. So the question was brought up by the city manager whether a resolution was required to do this, and after actually looking through it, it's part of the MOU. I mean, we we would have to assist them a- at their request at any given point from the law enforcement standpoint. Um, and again, this is statutorily mandated, this is something that will occur, it's not up for debate. Um, you having questions? I don't have anything else as far as this is concerned.
No, I uh, does anybody have any questions on that?
No, your recommendation?
My recommendation is to follow the law. I have no choice, I'm sworn to it, so we will follow the law.
That sounds uh, that sounds, that sounds right, uh, I'm 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 in favor of that.
Um.
Did you make a motion?
No, this is, it's a report, there's nothing that's.
It's a report.
There's nothing that uh, nothing in front of us today, thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Next item.
Item F, discussion in reference to additional public parking around the city near commercial areas by uh Vice Mayor Planes.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Penna, can you please elaborate a little bit? Um, I think that uh by doing this, we will alleviate um. Uh, issues of uh of customers coming to our, to our small commercial area and parking in the residential area. I think, I think that uh this will help that issue, so that's why I'm bringing it up, I've had discussions with Mr. Penna in the past about it, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Correct, around, excuse me, around the perimeter of the city, we have ve- various areas that have paved areas that are being used for. Different businesses or different uh rental apartments uh for their parking in order not to park either within the building or park. Uh, additional customers on the outside, those areas aren't defined as city parking, they're just right-of-way. Uh, the discussion with Commercial Vice Mayor Blanis is to go ahead and spend a little money in. Stripping those areas and showing them as parking spaces and then eventually include them in our parking for pay system. Uh, with the more modern uh apps like the the different.
Wh- what areas go, can you give an example of an area so I can visualize?
We have uh over here by FEI Institute, there's parking there on Fifty-Eighth Avenue. Uh, we have parking on Fifteenth and Sixty-seventh by the ALF that's there. We have parking along the new buildings in the uh Twenty-first Street, Twenty and Twenty-first Street area. Uh, and Twenty-third Street area that uh were put in by the developer when they did that. And those are just being used outright without, sometimes people park there all day, because they have no incentive to move the car.
Right, and you know, around the developments, the, you know, the issue with around the developments is, as we've, you know, dealt with in the past. Um, you know, we have to, we have to be very careful because we don't want to create a situation where we start the pay-to-park. And then by doing so, actually exacerbate the situ- the situation and force them to park in the residential area. Um, we don't want to work reverse, right, because in in these buildings, look, we we changed, we changed the the code here uh last year. But there's not enough parking for for the amount of people that actually are there. So, but why, my concern with those locations, the ones directly adjacent to the buildings. Is that if you go to a pay-to-park there, you're gonna force residents into the residential area and then do the opposite of what we're trying to do. Now, in regards to the commercial areas, um, are those paved already or are they just not striped, they're not striped?
No, no, that's right.
Oh, that's interesting, so, so, you know, I think in those areas, it's, you know, I I I think probably in my opinion, uh, you know, if we're gonna look at this. Um, you know, we'd, we'd be more, you know, we'd be smarter to go in that direction. I just, from 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 my experience with with the buildings, you know, it it we we could cause a reverse effect, and I don't know what your opinion on that is, but. We could cause the reverse effect because I know what you're trying to do, and by doing it, we might actually. You know, because if you're somebody who parks out there because you live there, right, and all of a sudden there's a meter. Now you can't park there all day, like you're, like you said, people park there all day, you know, I I get, you know, if we can eliminate that person from parking there all day. Without having to, them going anywhere else, it'd be fantastic, but if they can't park there, they gotta park somewhere. And they're not gonna park across Eight Street, not gonna park across Seventh Avenue, in fact, Sixth, Seventh Avenue, the county actually changed some things over there, so they can't even park over there. They have to park on our side, and um, you know, if they don't park there, they're gonna have to park in front of residential houses. So there is, we have a parking problem with the buildings, but for the commercial areas, um. Anything we can do to alleviate some of the, the, you know, parking in the residences for the commercial, for the, for the, for the businesses, I think is is uh positive. Um, but my opinion, I think that's where we should focus on, because I don't know if we can really. There's only so much you can do to actually alleviate a problem when there's not enough spots, you know?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you wholeheartedly, I I I agree. Um, why don't we, um, absolutely, I, you know, I uh I have the same sentiment that you have. And I don't want this to cause, you know, aggravate the issue that we have already. Uh, but there is in particular maybe one or two locations where, you know, as a city. Uh, we can designate this this areas and and I I believe that there's a couple of areas that are away from the apartment buildings.
Correct, yeah, yeah, you you mentioned some of them, yeah.
Yeah, that 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 can possibly not cause this issue, but on the contrary, alleviate the issue. Uh, so, you know, if if we approve this, Mr. Penna can look into it and study.
What I could do is look into how many area locations there are and how many spots we can gain and come back and report that to you.
And then the ones, the ones that are gonna, the ones that are in areas that are gonna cause this issue, we'll leave alone.
Yeah, let let let's let's do this, let's 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 move, let's move from the, you know, forward, it's a discussion item. Um, why don't we, why don't we bring back what the inventory is for for what we have?
Okay.
Um, and let's, let's just, you know, run in the inventory and see what works and does doesn't work. Um, so I guess what we're gonna bring back is locations you already know.
Correct.
But uh.
But we'll measure.
But areas that are that are unmarked, that are that are that are not, that are not striped, that are, that are city, that are city-regulated, city-owned. Um, where parking can be improved or or added or added to a, to a real parking inventory. And um, I guess we should bring all of it back, right?
Correct.
And then we'll 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 take out the ones that are problematic from there.
Okay, yeah, I I definitely don't want uh to cause the issue that you mentioned, I I I wholeheartedly agree. But like I say, there there's a couple of areas where I think um uh there's commercial and then uh, you know, right behind.
I'll be honest with you, e- even if, even if some of these areas, um, one of them you mentioned, I I think oftentimes issues for parking, right? But even if, even in this, you know, even if that's the case, even if it's already being used in inventory, as a beautification matter alone. Um, you know, having someone park on a, on a randomly paved, unmarked, you know, uh swale is not the same as having actually striped parking.
Correct.
Just as a matter of beautification, I'm I'm, you know, I'm I'm in favor of looking at it, because it does create a different look to the neighborhood and a great look to the business district.
Yeah, well, that that that's one of the reasons why, you know, I'm 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 bringing this up. Uh, eh, there's one particular area that I know that that's gonna help uh the street and the residents that live on that street. And, you know, and 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 it's away from the buildings, uh, you know, uh, there's no.
Is it Thirteenth?
Uh.
There's, there's Thirteenth, there's Eleventh, there's Twelfth, there's several areas.
We we have a, we have a big parking problem on on Thirty-seventh, but I'm, we're not gonna get into that tonight.
Nonetheless, we'll let Mr. Penna, um, you know, take a look at it and then you'll bring it back to us and.
Yes.
And we'll designate it or or approve it, okay?
Beautiful, go ahead.
There's also been issues at Garden Club Park, for example, I've had residents reach out to me that there's commercial, you know, businesses that are parking their vehicles there. Is there a way to enforce that?
Again, we would have to put some type of metering device where people have to pay to park or certain, uh, limit the the amount of hours they could spend at that spot.
And my concern with that is that we have residents that want to enjoy the park and now they're having to pay to use the park. So is there a way to allow the residents to park there but not allow the commercial businesses to park there?
Well, you you, I mean, I'm gonna stop right there, you can't, I mean, we can't, we can't stop visitors from coming to the park and parking there. You know, what you're, what we have to try to do is stop the abuse of the parking, right? And and I get what you're saying, you don't wanna have people pay to 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 go to the park. We might have to get a little creative, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if any governments do this, but we might have to find a way for them to self. To, you know, maybe not in a payment form, but to self, uh, you know, to check in, right? Check in through through one of these apps, I don't know what that costs, but to check in through one of these apps, so you know how much time has elapsed. And that's the biggest problem that you have from a enforcement perspective, is you don't know, you're not gonna have someone stare marking down this car got here, then an hour later come back, car's still here, an hour later come back, car's still here. Um, but you know, that that's, that's the benefit of having the the pay-for-park is you know how much time somebody's there. Um, I don't know, if to, what would you wanna do, which I think is, you know, I'm not gonna say necessarily, but but, you know. Something that could help, it's, you, we have to get a little creative, because if you don't wanna charge and, but you don't want people to abuse the parking. You have to get really creative in that middle ground, I'm not sure if anyone does it, I've never seen it, doesn't mean it can't be done, right? Um, maybe you started a whole new industry, but uh, but I I think that's, that's where, that's where you have to get creative. Um, I see the engineers coming to the.
Like, like one off.
Well, actually, what you were talking about, just something popped to mind, because I I did see something like that in Doral when when uh they first opened the downtown Doral, the one on.
Mm-hmm.
By Eighty-seventh. Uh, they're parking there, you had to get on the app, register your, it didn't cost anything, but you had to. But you had to, to, they know, that's interesting, was that, was that city center or downtown or? Uh, not city center, downtown. Downtown Doral, okay. One off Eighty-seventh, okay, yeah. They had a system like that, now I think it's pay, but when they first started, they had a system like that. Right, I I mean, you know, it's interesting perspective, you know, it's a spot, because it's not the business district. Which, listen, I I don't like charging for the business district either, because it's, it's, you know, somewhat hurts the businesses, especially in some of these. You know, lower margin businesses, lower costs, where people come and get two dollar, a two dollar thing and leave. But um, but, you know, for the parks, you really can't, you can't charge, so something like that, if we were to be able to put it into practice. Um, you know, might, might work, for the areas that, the Cooper Park is not an abused area, people don't, I'm, my knowledge, people don't leave overnight. You know, like commercial vehicles there, something like that, but Garden Club Park, uh, very well could be an area like that, um, and some other areas in the city, so.
What was happening at Garden Club was that there was commercial businesses off Sixty-seventh, they were having their employees park at Garden Park. And then they were walking over. And then they were walking over to for their workday, so then our residents would go to use the park and there would be no parking.
Right, okay.
That was addressed, however, but just to prevent that from happening again.
Okay, let's uh, yeah, let's 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 keep on that, I think, you know, if you've seen it, right, it wasn't, it wasn't a, oh, it wasn't a. A solution that they were putting in permanently, but it it's a solution that they put in temporarily, any temporary solution can be a permanent solution, so. Um, let's keep on that, let's, let's, let's see how we can, uh. Is there a way we can track if there's, there's more complaints coming out of there from on that, or if that's kind of resolved? I, because the businesses, you know, I I get you can kind of, you can deal with them, even though you can't really enforce, I mean, is there a way to enforce anything against them, really? So, so we'll see how long that lasts, um, we'll 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 keep an eye on it, and if it becomes a, becomes a constant issue, we'll we'll address it.
Then we'll uh allow Mr. Penna to to take a look and see if there's any possibility.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Okay, and we'll include the areas around Garden Club, just so.
Right, just so it comes, it comes back to us, yeah. All right, next item.
Item twelve, consent agenda items known this evening, item thirteen, good of the order.
Anyone for good of the order? Uh, I I I just have one thing, uh, and it's more as a note for next commission meeting. If we can get a report on the, you know, the status of the FERDA grant, um, and see what happens, you know. If there's any, was any movement to what happened there, um, so we can get that for next commission meeting?
We do have a Parks and Rec meeting that.
Earlier than.
Earlier in the day of our next commission meeting, so we'll have something to report back.
Yeah, perfect, okay, all right, um, do you have a motion to adjourn? Motion?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.